And quick notice of this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment was set by email to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster, the municipal newspapers, and a notice was posted on the Multi Board of Municipal Building. April Ross.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Ramena.
Here.
Mr. Michelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Neill.
Here.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January twenty twenty four meeting of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment. Please raise your hands to the flag under the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the same as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe we've got some swearing in of some members.
Okay, April, who's getting sworn in?
Chuck, Barry, and Mark.
Okay. If you all could stand up and raise your right hand, and I'll say, state your name, and we'll start with Chuck, and then after that, we can all repeat at the same time. So I state your name.
Charles Ross.
And Mr. Kevin.
And Mr. David.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of a member.
Of a member.
Of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me guide.
So help me guide.
We'll start with nomination for Chair of the Board. Make a motion. I'm looking to make a motion. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you, Tony.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations for Chair?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post?
Thank you. And nominations for Vice Chair. I'll nominate, tell me. Oh, thank you. I'll second. Thank you, Chuck. Any other nominations for Vice Chair?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post?
Thank you all. Much appreciated. Okay, we've got some important business to take care of before we do the applications. We'll start with approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the December twenty eight minutes. Second?
Second.
Mr. Ross.
This is under, I'm being, I will stand.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
I'm standing.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
I'm standing.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Okay, next item would be the resolution, which I have read, would be reappointing Kevin Kennedy as the Attorney representing this Board. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. With pleasure.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Okay, resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank you. I've been very fortunate to be this Attorney for this Board for a number of years. I very much appreciate it. I'm still very excited by the appointment. I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. You've done a fine job representing us, keeping us out of trouble for the most part. Okay, with that, the next resolution is appointing April Claudio as our Board Secretary for twenty twenty four.
I'll make that resolution.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Okay, from here, I'll let you pick up, Mr. Kennedy, the resolutions.
Sure, the first one is on Solva seven oh three thirteenth Avenue, and that was an approval to construct in addition to an existing two-family home. And the conditions of note, the resolution was distributed, the conditions of note were, remember, this was, we had first hearing, a lot of board concerns, and the expressed those concerns, and they came back and eliminated a lot of those concerns, but basically confirmation that the shared common driveway shall be perpetually eliminated, confirmation that the existing shared common driveway even shall be officially vacated in the office of the county clerk, and, let's see, inclusion of confirmation that the applicant or any successor owner shall perpetually replace and replant the landscaping at the site. It's going to be a single driveway. The site shall have four all-street parking spaces, as depicted on those approved modified plans, and then, I just wanted to, we said, we gave them a variance for driveway setback, but we said, as my notes reflected, and you need to confirm, confirmation that if possible, the applicant shall provide a compliant one-foot driveway setback. I think that was what we had. And then additional green space and landscaping being added to the site, and no further expansion or intensification of the use, absent further formal approval of the Board. And we also had the inclusion of a note confirming that the existing concrete block wall shall be removed unless the zoning officer determines otherwise. I think that was part of it. And they officially vacate that shared driveway, and they submit proof of that, that it gets recorded, and our standard documents, standard conditions that that's accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I'd like to make a motion to approve the seven oh three thirteenth Avenue application.
I'll second it.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, that, that whole, that was, the entirety of that was in November, now. You said, oh, let's see. I think the first one was July twenty, June twenty second.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Okay, next one was the approval of the application of Hemsworth, and that was two oh eight eighth Avenue, and that was demolition of the existing single-family structure, construction of a new single-family dwelling on the site. And the conditions, the air conditioning condenser shall be located in an zone compliant location, and the generator, additional landscaping, no utilities in the garage except electrical service and a hose bid are permitted, no parking in the municipal right-of-way, absent formal approval from the Borough of Belmar, perpetually replacing and removing landscaping. The existing curb cut on the eighth Avenue shall be eliminated, and then a new curb cut shall be installed on Snyder Avenue and installed and maintained in accordance with the Borough's design standards. The garage not to be utilized as living space. Let's see, the applicant shall comply with the Borough's prevailing seller definition and requirements, to be verified by our friend Ted, and confirmation that the building coverage shall not exceed forty-six point two percent, as opposed to forty-four point two-three percent. I think there is an inconsistency there, that they have to comply with the Borough's half-story ordinance, as verified by our zoning officer, and it's a two-and-a-half-story structure, not a three-story structure. They have a compliant floor area ratio, the seller is not to utilize as habitable space, the existing twenty-six square foot shed and the seventy, existing seventy-seven square foot sheds to be removed, the concrete patio in the rear to be removed, the roof pitch and the dormer pitch calculations to be verified by Ted. I think I want, I want to work through the application. We've got Bilco doors shall be relocated to the rear of the home, and the steps shall be removed from the ground-level deck so that it's located at grade, and we have the applicant's professional engineer signing a two-signing certification confirming that the house that will be constructed is in accordance with the testimony, in accordance with the approved plans, and in accordance with the terms of the resolution, and good faith attempts to have the utilities placed underground. And I just, for the record, I did shoot this to Mike Ken, and that was the applicant's engineer and surveyor, and he said, everything looks good. The I O S included one variance that I don't think is necessary. I'd included that they needed the variance for the second-floor deck because it was over, to not have a deck replaced over a front porch, and I also said that they were doing that on the top floor as well, and he said, that's not the case, so it's okay, we just eliminate that variance.
Are you, wasn't one of those sheds going to be relocated? I'm both over the, I'm not sure. I thought it was one remove.
Everything removed.
That would be removed.
Yeah. Is that what you had?
Yes.
Okay, great. Also, on this application, if I'm recalling correctly, Ted wasn't here to help us clarify, but the applicant was stating that there's some sort of difference between referring to something as a seller versus referring to it as a basement. Ted, do you educate us on why that terminology matters?
Well, if the cubic contact of the basement is out of the ground, more than fifty percent of it is out of the ground, it's considered basement. If it's in the ground, more than fifty percent is in the ground, it's considered a cellar.
Interesting. So if I have a six-foot head height and ground level is three feet, what does, what does?
Well, the cubic contact, if it's more than fifty percent out of the ground.
And, and, and what does it matter? I'm just curious.
Well, then it becomes a store.
When it exceeds?
More than fifty percent out of the ground.
And that's a basement definition?
Right.
Even though it's mostly above ground, it counts as?
Well, if it's mostly, mostly above ground, it's considered a store.
Interesting. Okay.
A cellar.
Not a store.
No, no, if it's more than fifty percent in the ground, it's a cellar.
And fifty percent out. So I don't recall in this application, I think they were referring to it as a cellar, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, and, and I think we had, one of the conditions was Ted confirmed that it is a cellar.
Right, and did, and did. Okay, great, ready to vote?
As modified.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Ross.
I'm standing.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
I'm standing.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
I'm standing.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
All right, I'll send it as modified, one term on April. The next, Mr. Chairman, was Matone five twelve Sixth Avenue, and that was a request to construct several improvements to an existing single-family dwelling. The resolution's been submitted, and the conditions of note were basically confirmation that they perpetually maintain the landscaping and stormwater management, or stormwater runoff not drain or flow onto adjacent properties, and that we encourage them, per the unrecorded discussion, to formally review the existing foundation details with their professional representatives, so as to confirm that the existing foundation can accommodate the load capacity of their addition. I think that was suggested, the, the, the standard conditions.
Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
I'm standing.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
I'm standing.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the last was the Belmar VF Realty, and all we're doing is dismissing this without prejudice. You'll recall that this came to us on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and I think there was some issues, and they said, let us come back, and basically, April and I spoke with the applicant's attorney, Bill Schreiber, yesterday, and they said, yes, dismiss it. So this is a resolution dismissing it without prejudice, which just allows April to close her files, return any escrow, and move on. It's just, as you recall, if you have an application hanging out too long, under certain circumstances, there's a potential for an automatic approval, which is the worst in the world for us, and so this just dismisses it, ends the, and ends it.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Ramena.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, before we move on to the year-end report, I just have a question. Are we going to need an executive session at the end of this evening?
We, we can go in that.
Okay, I just want to set expectations for the Board.
Got it. Not too long.
Yeah, we don't expect it to be more than, more than ten minutes.
Correct.
Fifteen minutes at the top, more than likely, but I want to let the Board make aware relative to some pressing matters and litigation that Mr. Kennedy wants updates on. So we will be done after the final application. With that, the year-end report, April.
I just get to know if you have anything you want to add to it before I send it to the council?
There was something I was contemplating, and I'm not really sure if it really refers to council action or Board action, but when we, when we heard the application for the cell tower at Monblook's, one thing that came up was if, let's say Verizon were to sign an agreement for ten years to have a cell tower there, and then the owner of the building decided to board it up because it's making enough revenue off the cell tower that doesn't make sense to run the business anymore, I implore the Council to pass some sort of ordinance that would prohibit that type of use. Another example I would give is, and we all know this, that the Maker Hotel is currently making a lot of money on the, you know, on the cell towers that they're leasing out, and if the hotel were to shut down and get boarded up, I'm not sure whether the town has any recourse to try to revoke or condemn or force, you know, continued business and such. So I would ask that the Council consider doing something in regard proactively prior to any cases of litigation coming up, to ensure that something that could not be allowed to occur, especially on Ocean, I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't apply to anywhere, but especially on Ocean Avenue. Excuse me? I think, that, that, that should be anywhere, right? Well, I probably, no reason to qualify it, but.
So we can definitely add, if, if that's, except that we can add this expressing that the Borough look into regulating some type of that, if there is a cell tower operating inside, it's got to be some type of active maintained site.
If it's on a commercial property, that, that, that the cell tower couldn't remain if the business were to, and then the definition of what constitutes an ongoing business would also probably have to be defined, right? Because if you're open one day a year on a vacant property, I mean, they might meet the letter of the law, so, you know, I, I wouldn't believe other towns have ordinance to this extent that we might be able to emulate, but unless someone on the Board objects, I think that kind of info coming from us would maybe take care of the potential issue.
Yeah, if you were telling them on.
Good idea. About the prolongance, but I did take a note. Last year, I think we did, we were two of three on our recommendations that we put before our Council with regard to the relooking at use for the garages and parking clarification, but there was one thing that we had on a couple of years, and I don't have the specifics of why, but at the time it made a lot of sense, was maybe like some relooking of the definition, I think of the, the half-story, there was some discussion on the dormers, and I forget how, what do you, what we were trying to articulate on the last two times we put that forth, but I'm curious as to if it ever generates conversation, because at the time, I remember, it made sense when we put it forth. I don't know.
Do you have a better idea?
No, I had to do with definition of the half-story.
The half-story.
Yeah, and like way, I forget like the, the volume and the way the dormer could, I can, I have.
Well, the half-story definition doesn't talk about dormers, that's a separate definition.
You can just disregard it, I guess, for now, but I remember I wrote it down somewhere, and I thought it made good sense.
Yeah.
It wasn't on the twenty twenty-two report.
Okay. All right, you can disregard it for now.
I, I do recall, Chuck, to that, what you're talking about, I think we had an application that, that they're trying to say to have story or just for the flat roof.
And something like that.
Some sort of problem, and I do think that really qualifies as a third floor.
Yeah, a half-story, you can't have flat roof.
Right.
Because it defines the roof pitch at seven twelve, which means you can't have a flat roof.
And my, I, I don't, Chuck, I wouldn't swear that, that was terminated, we're talking about, but I do recall us having some, some problems around the roof style.
Yeah, and I can look at my notes at, in the office, and we can, even if it's a standalone item, we can have the next meeting if we want authorization.
And, and it just wouldn't be part of your end report.
Right.
It would be, it would be an ad hoc, I think, and we would report it back to the Council, so that'd be great, if we could do that.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything, April, relative to the year-end report else that we might need to talk about?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. So with that, I think we're ready for the first application. Thanks for the motion.
A poll or announcement.
I'm sorry.
There was an application, I don't have it on the agenda, that was noticed for this meeting, it was for Andrew Teraazi, he noticed at two fourteen Sixteenth Avenue, it's actually two oh eight Sixteenth Avenue, so we just need a motion to carry that to the March twenty-eighth meeting, and they are going to re-notice.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And just for the record, the applicant's attorney did consent to extend the time period, which the Board has to add.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, so with that slate, we're ready for the first applicant, which is Edward and Diane Fox.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant teams come forward, we're going to do a couple of things procedurally. Is there anyone here who had any questions or comments, concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be my opinion, we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight, and what we'll do is we'll swear in Ted Bianchi, our zoning officer and construction official. Ted, you swear that information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providing will be the truth, the best of knowledge, to help you guide.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we will just mark into the record what we, as a Board, have before us. So we will mark in, A one is the development application, and it's amended, and it's dated December of two thousand twenty-three. A two will be the minor land use zoning permit, and that is dated September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two slash September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. A three is a survey, and that is prepared by Morgan Engineering, and that is dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. And A four, floor plans and elevations, prepared by Mary Hearn, and that is dated November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of five pages. People think that's it, right? All right, and this is Jeff Beekman, he's the applicant's attorney. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board. Congratulations on your appointments. Jeffrey Beekman of the Beekman Law Firm in Ocean Grove, New Jersey. I represent the applicant, Edward Fox, who's sitting behind that, the left of me, and Diane Fox, who's sitting behind Mr. Fox. And we also will have this, this evening, Mary Hearn, our architect, will be testifying on behalf of the application and the plan. In short, this is an application of a property that has eight thousand square feet. There are two single-family dwellings, one is a cottage, and one is the primary or principal residence on the lot. The lot is inset one lot from the, from Ocean Avenue, directing the next two apartments, and it is identified as lot.
On the bottom.
One seventy lot two. Yeah, it's not that, it's up here. I believe it's one seventy lot two, but I just wanted to show it.
On the bottom of two.
Right, one seventy lot two, and known as one oh three Seventeenth Avenue. So two witnesses, I'm not sure, Mr. Kennedy, if you want both of them to be sworn in.
Sure. We'll swear them both in. Both witnesses could just stand and raise your right hands, please. Write your name.
Edward Fox.
And you are the owner of the property?
I am the owner with my wife's name.
Okay. And Ms. Hearn, just state your name and business address for the record.
Mary Hearn, ten oh seven B Main Street, Belmar.
And Ms. Hearn, you're testifying in your capacity as a licensed architect, with all your licenses and certifications up to date.
I am.
Okay, if you could just both raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that's all right, we reflect both witnesses have been sworn in. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Fox, you're the, assuming we get the owner of one oh three Seventeenth Avenue in Belmar?
Yes, so first of all, thanks for seeing us this evening. Diane and I, we live up in Wyckoff, New Jersey. We bought the house, the property in two thousand nineteen. Really, it was always our dream to have a beach house, but beyond that, we have greater purpose. Our family extended family lives in the house, so that would be my sister-in-law, my niece, my mother-in-law. We spend our time pretty much Wednesday, Thursday through Monday, here down in Belmar. And our religion is to, to right-size the house. If you, if you came to the house and you see that there's a imbalance in rooms, there's opportunity to, it's called rebalance, and as we move forward, we'd also like to secure some more beach views, given our proximity to, to the beach. Today, only beach view is from my bedroom window. But beyond that, we are considering, as we are in the latter quarter of our careers, moving down to Belmar permanently. We enjoy the community, we really adopt it, and want to make sure that we have enough room for our families, for our family and ourselves, so that's what brings us where we leave this evening.
And Mr. Fox, you also have a cottage on the property?
We do. So when we bought the property in nineteen, as I mentioned, there were two purposes, a location of the beach, the second space for our family, and the property fit both those needs, so we do lease up the cottage. We, we've had four renters in, in since we've owned the home. We don't believe in renting weekly during the summer. It's quite an active area, you know, it takes a little getting used to when you first get down there, and the summer is quite busy, but we like the stability of one person renting on annual lease, and we appreciate the fact that there's revenue from the cottage that can help us fund the investment in the home.
And you're not proposing any changes to that cottage, is that correct?
That's correct.
The only changes that you're proposing are in front of the cottage and making the existing pebble surface to grass, is that accurate?
Yes, and keeping with, you know, the guidance we've had from working with Mary, and, yeah, there are a little bit to comply to what needs to be done to.
You mentioned in your testimony that the building, the, the principal dwelling is out of bounds. Can you just describe a little bit some of the deficiencies you've come across since you've lived there, or on there?
Look, the living room is undersized, our master bedroom is oversized. The master bedroom is actually bigger than the living room. The living room has a bathroom in it, so the kitchen's, you know, pretty, pretty undersized. So the common space is, is undersized. There is a back bedroom, which works perfectly for my mother-in-law, who's eighty-five, that has a walk-in shower, and, you know, go forward, we're not touching that room, because it works very well. The other areas, the room, quite, the other areas of the house, quite frankly, need to be rebalanced, if you will, to, to make it a permanent residence for us, and to still accommodate our family members.
And there's some kind of awkward feature on the second floor relative to stepping down and stepping up?
Yeah, so the backdrop is the house was done in two thousand fourteen, I think it was a family architect who did it. If you guys came, you probably said, this is one of the worst architect that houses looks to it, but you come up the stairs, you have to step up, and step down, step down, so I'm not doing the best job describing it, but it's very awkward. That's just one thing that's, it's called a character of the house.
And when you're down here, you also use the space for your business office?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a consultant, had a thirty-three-year career in the cosmetics industry. I started a consulting company after leaving L'Oreal, and so I can work more remotely. My wife and I are based at Bryan, she's being off three days a week, otherwise she's down here, so, yeah, I work from the home, I work from our bedroom, and set the table, so our bedroom's big enough to accommodate a bed and enough to work, but again, it's probably oversized, and in other areas, the house are undersized.
But you don't have any appointments or anything like that at the, at the house?
No, no.
I don't have any other questions from the House.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want one?
Yes, well, I'll switch. Are these new?
Yeah.
Hello.
And Mary, you have testified before this board many occasions, correct?
I have.
Um, how would I offer Mary as an expert architect unless there are any objections?
We accept tonight's, uh, express, any?
So Jeff, I have the site plans, I have the aerial, and I have photographs.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's do the site plan first.
So A five is what?
Site plan. It's identical to sheet number one, but it is now colored.
Alright, so A five will be an illustrated site plan prepared by your office?
Correct.
And is there a date on that?
Same date.
Which is?
Eleven twenty twenty-three.
Eleven twenty twenty-three, so that'll be A five.
Uh, A six will be the photographs, not the aerial photographs.
So that's a board containing how many photos, Mary?
Two on the front and nine on the rear.
Two on the front, nine on rear, and that's pictures of?
The subject property and a rendering of the new front elevation.
Alright, and just for the record, the pictures were taken by?
My office.
And roughly when?
This week.
So that would mean that they're a pretty accurate depiction of what exists?
Correct.
Okay, and the rendering is prepared by your office?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then A seven will be an aerial.
Correct.
Aerial photograph, got it.
And Mary, how was that aerial prepared?
It was taken off the internet, Google Maps.
So, nothing else?
Just keep these here for now.
Do you have any other ones?
I don't.
Uh, so Mary, you're the architect of record. You've been hired by the Foxes to prepare the plans that have been submitted this evening?
Correct.
Um, and so what was the program that the, uh, Foxes that were charged you to look at?
So, so we walked the home and we designated, um, which areas needed improvement to make them more comfortable to stay there longer times and bring the whole family there. We intentionally wanted to work on the back house, not the front. This is split from norm. The principal structure is at the rear of the property and the cottage, the accessory cottage is at the front of the property. So we wanna work on the bigger principal structure and, um, modify it and add to it and add up, um, to accommodate more space. And, and touched upon this, there is, there are five bedrooms in the home and three baths. And we would like five bedrooms. When we're done, we're gonna add a half if it improve. But there's not as much common space to balance the bedroom space. So it is set up for summer use and get outside. The family room is too small, and I've had meals with them there. The dining room is small, the kitchen's very small. And we're not hoping to change everything about the house, but modify it in small ways to make each of those spaces more functional, somewhat bigger. There are some peculiarities with, uh, views here. As said, we're only one piece of property off of Ocean Avenue, but we sit behind a very large apartment building. So the apartment building on the south corner of Seventeenth and Ocean is two-story, and the house is now two-story, so most of the views are blocked. And where the house is located, the, the views are blocked, of the ocean. And views to the west aren't as desirable. There's a lot of, um, multi-dwelling lots to the west, as is ours in multi-dwelling lot. Um, so the goal was to find where the views are best and build a lot of windows there, but then also outdoor space balcony to grab those views kind of around, so looking southeast and northeast at the ocean as best we can. And in, at the same time, making the bedrooms more rectilinear, they're very odd shaped, some of them. The closets are undersized or they're odd. There's a lot of oddities about the house. We touched upon the stair on the second floor. You come up the stair now and you have to decide whether to go left or right and go up stairs either way. But if you wanna go from one side to the other, you have to go down and then back up. And the bathroom is right at that level, so there's stairs to be made for everyone on the second floor. There's only one bath now. So the challenge was, how can we do this with, um, adhering to the zoning rules as best we could and make sense of what is savable about the house, and there's enough to save that it makes sense to save it? And then build upon it and grab views and, and all those parts. And, um, if you're ready for that, I can walk through each of the floor plans to do that.
So before we get to the floor plans, uh, because we have the site plan up there, which has been identified as A five.
Right.
So let's just run through, on the left you have the existing, and on the right you have the proposed.
Right.
Um, and we're talking about only the rear structure, so if you, just for the board and public, can you just point out the, the structure we're talking about?
And this is identical to the cover sheet on, in your set. I just colored it so it's easier to talk about and, and visibly, you know, recognizable what we hope to change. So here on the left is the existing conditions, and it's the rear principal dwelling and the front cottage. The rear principal dwelling has a one-story covered porch at the rear southwest corner. And their second floor all the way to the front in this pink box, but there's covered front porch on the first floor underneath that second floor. It's only four feet deep, and the column and rail line eat up some of that, so it's very shallow and not very usable. And it's here at the northeast corner. And then at the front, there's a one-story cottage with a wraparound porch, one story, that is significant in size. The hope is to save this and then add to this, let it grow higher, take advantage of all of the footprint, which we'll talk about in a minute. And there's a, a deep driveway now. You can fit a lot of cars in, and it's loose stone. And there's loose stone across the front of the cottage and down the west side and down the east side of the house. You recently had your ordinance change that counts all that loose stone at fifty percent. So we submitted this application a long time ago, and we had to resubmit to make sure we were updated in how the, how the items on the site are, are calculated. So in trying to bring the, um, impervious coverage down, we've tried to add green to the site. So first of all, the structures, what we hope to do is, is build second floor, first floor out to the depth of the second floor, and then add a new porch forward of the front line of the back house. And then fill in the covered porch at the back on the first floor, but then build a porch on top of it where the view is better. On the first floor, you're looking at your neighbors' houses. On the second floor, you get a better shot at looking southeast toward the water. So we're trying to use the footprint as best we can in not making it grow too much, but give all the spaces and take better advantage of the views at the same time. And then no change is proposed to the cottage. But then we'd like to green up the front because of impervious coverage here, and then put in planting so that it doesn't look like just a summer rental, it'll look more lived in. And then leave the stone out at the front because there's a lot of water that collects in the right-of-way and stays there. So we don't wanna put green in the right-of-way. And then shorten up the driveway so that there's green in front of the house at the back, where the driveway right now comes all the way to the house. Where it would be nice if we had some green there to soften the look in front of the new porch. In doing that, um, there's a shed on the property that we'd like to keep. There's no garage on the property, so bicycles and things, beach things go in there. And there are walkways to it that we'd like to keep. And then we'd have new back exit out of the house onto, uh, the lawn in the back. Another thing that we hope to change is there are AC units behind the house here that are right behind Diane's mom's windows, and they're loud for her, and we'd like to move them, possibly replace them, but move them at least over to the west side, to a solid wall where they won't affect anybody. And those would be compliant. We have plenty of distance to the property line there. The existing AC unit for the cottage would stay where it is. So we'd be bringing the entrance slightly further forward on the house and grow it to the north.
And as far as the setbacks of the principal dwelling, are there any issues with setbacks?
No, we meet all the required setbacks existing and all the proposed setbacks are, um, are allowed. Or, or we meet all the requirements setback-wise and height-wise.
So one of the variances that's requested tonight is the continuation of the two-family use, which in essence is a deed to expansion of non-formal use, correct?
That's correct.
Um, and then the other two variances are associated with building coverage and lot coverage, correct?
Correct.
So before we get to the building coverage, um, what, these changes that you're proposing on the lot coverage, what's the difference?
The existing and proposed?
Existing versus proposed.
So it's on the chart, on the cover sheet, the building coverage exists at thirty-three point one percent?
I'm sorry, just the lot cover, just the, just the impervious.
Oh, impervious, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll get to the building.
Fair enough. Okay, impervious coverage is sixty-four percent existing, and we're proposed at fifty-six point one, where fifty percent maximum is allowed.
So we're actually reducing the overall coverage?
By eight percent.
Um, okay, let's talk a little bit about the floor plans and then we'll come back to that last variant relative.
Do I put that up, the drawing up there?
Yeah, let's do that.
So this is A six, and this is not in your packet, but this is a photo of the front, and I don't mean to exclude you. This is a photo of the front of the principal structure, and this is a rendering of what it could look like if approved, what it would look like if approved. And, and you have a, a drawing of the front elevation in, in the packet, but it's not colored. So you want me to walk through the plans now?
Yeah, let's walk through the plans. Uh, we'll begin with the first one.
So if you go to sheet two, on the right is a drawing of the existing floor plan of the first floor. And on the left is a drawing of the proposed first floor plan. We'll start at the front, the family room right now, has windows to the east and to the front, and a solid wall at the, of the room. So putting a TV anywhere makes your back turn to the ocean view. And there's really no direct view straight out of the windows on the first floor to the east other than the apartment building and the parking lot in front of it, or between us and the apartment building. So we'd like to fill in the windows on the east side and make that the TV and fireplace wall, but keep a long window at the corner because toward the northeast there is view, and then put in longer windows across the front. You see there's a, a coat closet behind the front door. If we eliminate that and scoop the door over to the right, to the corner, the room benefits, um, usability and furniture placement. What we've done is we've brought the front wall of the family room in line with the existing covered porch. You can see how they line up on the sheet. So we'd be adding that five feet to the depth of the family room. And it gets you off the stair more and makes the, the floor, you know, the usable floor area of the family room much better. And then if you look to the right, there's a bedroom in the front of the house with the closet and a bathroom near it. And both those doors open directly to the family room, which is not convenient for privacy or, or, you know, sleeping. So we'd like to convert that bedroom to a study. This could be Diane's study, and take the closet out. She's got room for furniture, and relocate that bathroom. Because it, to me as a designer, we would never put a bathroom opening directly to a family room if we could avoid it. It's just not private enough. So if we eliminate that bathroom, it immediately opens up space for the dining room. So we're not creating any additional space to get a better dining room, we're just using the area of the bathroom. And we would have room for built-in for, you know, table linens and candles and liquor and glassware and all the things that we would normally store in a piece of furniture, we could do as a built-in there. And then it adds more space around the table, which is, is really needed here. It's, it's very tight when, when you sit at their table now. And I've not been there when their whole family's there. And then the kitchen is behind the dining room, and if you look at the existing kitchen on, on the drawing on the right, you see there's just a very small L at the back corner of the house and a small island. There's nothing on the left wall because it's all doors. There's five doors, including the two to the back. There's seven doors that open into this kitchen. So that whole wall is not functional for the kitchen itself. There's function behind those doors. There's a pantry under the stair, which is awkward because it's under the stair. And there's a stack washer dryer in the cannibal room closet. And then there's a door directly to Diane's mom's bedroom, right off the kitchen and right off the back door, where, again, it's not very private and it tends to be noisy. If you looked at the drawing to the left, if we take the, the washer and dryer out of its closet and we put a new furnace and water heater under the stair in that closet, we change the mechanical closet to a pantry closet, now we have a decent pantry closet that serves the kitchen. And we close up the door to the back bedroom and we get five more feet of cabinetry and upper cabinetry. What that does, it offers five more, ten more lineal feet of cabinetry in a kitchen that doesn't have an awful lot of cabinetry. Also visually, it brings the kitchen across that whole space. It really makes the kitchen feel bigger for not a lot of changing around. We get to even save all the existing cabinetry and, and island, but the kitchen feels and functions much bigger. In order to do all that switching around, we wanna enclose the rear covered porch and make it the bathroom, the laundry and the coat closet. So the coat closet that we took away from the front door moves to the back. The laundry from, in the kitchen moves to the back. And the bathroom that opens to the family room moves to the back. And you have a back entry, so you have a front entry and a back entry, and we get to move the back bedroom's door to the back of the house where it's much more quiet and not directly open to the kitchen. So, um, and then, and then we hope to add a porch across the whole front at this level. The porch right now, as you can see, is only five feet deep, and with the railing, it's only four and change, so it's, it's very tight. And the only place to sit on the porch is all the way to the east, and the view is best all the way to the west to look around that apartment building. So we'd like to bring the porch all the way across, and that footprint is being added, but other than that, we're working within the footprint of the house on this level. The goal is to get the space, not moving everything and trying to keep the overall square footage, you know? Okay, go to the second floor?
Yes. Mary, might I ask that we, that we spend, do a focus on the variances that are being asked rather than, rather than the interior design?
Sure.
Only as it, interior design is relevant only as it relates to the variances that you're asking for. It's a wonderful house and it's wonderful design, and I'm sure your design is wonderful, but, but we really just wanna correlate back the changes you're asking for and then, and then back to the variances and why they're necessary, okay? So before we go to the second, along those lines, I was gonna ask you, so, um, the, uh, sighting of the new proposed renovations, the east wall and the west wall are in the same exact locations as exist today.
Correct.
And again, they're conforming, right? The, the rear addition of that, uh, area that you were talking about with the bathroom, the coat closet, and, and the entryway into the bedroom, that is already considered part of the building coverage, correct?
Correct.
You're not adding anything in that area?
Not in terms of building coverage, correct?
In terms of building coverage, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And when it comes to the front of the house, that's where the additional building coverage gets in, correct?
Yes, for the new porch.
And, and so that new porch, is it just the new porch that is basically what the expanded building coverage is?
For the first floor or for the whole stack?
For the, for the stack.
No, because there's some new second floor that pulls out forward also over that spot.
Okay, but, but it's not beyond the porch?
It's not. It's not, no.
All right.
Mr. Beekman, if I could, so just, I'll say in a term I could perhaps understand or explain better, in my mind at least. Even though there might be additional space going above, the footprint that we're looking at extending here from what we can see is there's a slight footprint expansion over the back covered porch because it looks like it's indented a little bit from the exterior lines, but it looks like maybe a foot more times the width times the length, right? So a little bit of footprint is being taken up there. And the bulk of the additional lot coverage is being taken up by the front porch, which is going to be now coming out of shaded lines and then proposed addition to the right side. So it's really all that shaded line on your first page.
And the seams and that just pops out slightly.
Actually, the shaded line, not wall shaded line, only a portion of the addition up the back is expansion.
Correct, and it meets the required various setbacks.
Okay, so Mr. Beekman, would you mind just briefly running down the variances so we could stay focused on what it is you're seeking here for relief?
So we have three variances that are associated with the relief. The first variance is the fact that it's a lot that has two single-family dwellings on one lot detached. So that's the first variance, it's a D2 variance, expansion of the non-conforming use.
Right.
We're not touching, as Mary and my client indicated, we're not touching the cottage in the front. We're only proposing changes to the rear. The second variant-
Except for the grass that's being added.
Well, yes, I'm talking about the actual building themselves. The second variance we're seeking is building coverage. And the building coverage is proposed is-
Thirty-seven point seven.
And twenty-five percent is permitted. And the last variance we're proposing is overall impervious coverage, and that's actually being reduced from what's existing based upon those site changes that are being proposed to the exterior. And that is fifty-six point one.
Which is a reduction from current state.
Right, sixty-four percent being reduced to fifty-six point one.
Great, so I don't think there's much debate to be said about the third item. So relative to the first two items. And you neglected to mention what I would expect one other, parking.
We don't have parking.
So we provide the required parking for both. We've got very deep double-wide driveways.
Interesting.
Yep, and that exists. And there's only one curb cut for the two houses in that neighborhood, which is really important. The on-street parking is very difficult.
Right. Yeah, well, I think, I'm seeing five bedrooms, is that correct?
There's five in the principal structure and there are two in the cottage.
Ted, just for clarification, I think they're saying they're not looking for parking variance because once you hit three, there's-
Four bedrooms require three.
Right, and then, but there's no requirement for four parking spots. Like when you go to five or six bedrooms, you stay-
Stops at four.
And you have four compliant parking, you have six compliant parking spots currently. Excellent, okay.
Actually, there are more currently. We're reducing the size of the driveway to help mitigate the impervious coverage and we still have six.
That's good, but moreover, I guess, once we cap out at four, it becomes a dual point and you easily have four. So sorry, no issue whatsoever there. Okay, so if we stay focused on the first two. And I'm not saying that any of the other board members are okay with the third, but I can't imagine if it was, it's a reduction of coverage that anybody would have any qualms with that.
I was only putting into the record the minor tweaks we're trying to do in not making the footprint bigger because we're seeking the building coverage, right? But I'm happy to not run through every piece of it.
Understood, okay, understood.
And there was a rationale that we were looking at too, as to why we're proposing proposed.
Okay, please continue. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just really wanted us to stay focused on what you're appealing to.
Yep.
So Mary, briefly regarding the second floor, what type of spaces are you proposing, particularly to the most exterior points of the second floor?
So we're proposing four bedrooms and two baths, a laundry closet and closets for all the rooms, and then a covered porch at the back where we had one but just lifted, and then a covered, small covered porch off the front, which is the master bedroom.
And both of those covered porches are not going to extend beyond the first floor, correct? Are they actually tucked a little bit behind the first floor footprint?
They're not in the front, they're not as big, so we got some work line. They don't take up the whole footprint, if that's what you mean.
Correct.
Yeah.
And as far as the overall square footage of those open air areas, the balcony areas, the porch areas, can you just run through that?
Yeah, so you had asked me to do this before we got here. The porches and balconies take up eighteen point seven percent of the total square footage of the house. So we wanted you to hear that because it's not just solid bulk. So, you know, it's open and airy, there are ins and outs, which we all like to see, and it's just not solid mass.
And so with respect to the two dwellings on the lot?
How large is the lot? Eight thousand square feet.
And under the ordinance for this zone, what's a typical lot size?
Four thousand is required.
So we're on double that and we have two lots, or, I'm sorry, two dwellings on a double-sized lot?
That's correct.
I mean, it's narrow and deep, correct?
It's fifty feet wide by a hundred and sixty feet.
But square footage-wise, a density, it needs what is allowed.
Correct.
And but for those two being on one lot, this would conform with the zone as far as square footage, four thousand square feet per lot?
Yeah.
As far as the indoor and outdoor space, what's the reason why we're making the, give a couple reasons why you're making the expansions for those outdoor spaces?
Well, the house sits pretty far back on the property, and if you're in the backyard, which we tend to want to be in, you're literally looking at houses and apartment buildings right around you on the ground level. So offering some outdoor space on the upper levels to get you above that, which is not nice to look at, and looking at the ocean, which could be amazing. So the reason for that outdoor space on the upper levels is to get out of a very crowded little backyard and up. There are houses to the west that have back houses. So the neighborhood-
Why don't we put up the aerial?
Okay. Okay, yeah, I got it. This is A seven, and it's an aerial of the block. And I'll just point out, it's hard to see from there, but the red line, this is the subject of property. This is Seventeenth Avenue, this is the beach, so north is up on the map. So we are the first piece of property beyond the apartments that are on the corner of Seventeenth and Ocean. So we're on the south side. This is the cottage, and this is the principal structure that we hope to renovate. So there are homes to the west that have homes behind them. This house has a home behind it, this house has a home behind it. This house has the home that we lost in the fire, that will be rebuilt if approved soon. And then this is the apartment building. So you see how big the footprint of this apartment building is compared to the house that we're working on and it's framed in the middle. So the goal is to grab views here and here around that building. It's only two-story, thank goodness, and a low-pitched roof, so.
And to do those views, you have to move forward towards-
The closer you get to Seventeenth, the better the views to the northeast, yes. And the further west on the left, the better the views, correct?
And then you have also done an analysis as to what you can build on this lot, should you decide to start from scratch?
It's not the Fox's desire, so I don't want to put it in the board's head, but for the record, if we were to knock down, we would be allowed by right to build one forty-eight hundred square foot home and a detached two-car garage at four hundred and forty square feet compared to what we're proposing, if approved, a three thousand four hundred and forty-nine square foot home and keeping the five hundred and seventy-five square foot cottage. So the first scenario, if we renovate, knock everything down and build as big as possible, you could have fifty-two forty, five thousand two hundred and forty square feet of enclosed space where we're proposing four thousand and twenty-four, so twelve hundred less than the massing that would be allowed on this property.
And the other point I want to ask you to address is that cottage, it's five hundred and seventy-five square feet, but of that, what's the building coverage, square footage for that cottage?
The building coverage, square footage. Okay, so the cottage is five hundred and seventy-five square feet, which represents seven point one percent of the lot. The porch, the covered porch, is four hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which represents another six point two percent of the lot. There's a small outdoor shower, which is point three. In total, the cottage represents thirteen point six percent building coverage.
And the request being made is approximately twelve point seven percent higher? And half of that twelve point seven percent, the cottage is six point two?
The porch.
I'm sorry, the cottage porch is six point two.
Correct, yeah.
So again, the lot has a lot of open air areas as opposed to actual dwelling, interior dwelling.
It does, I think the open air light, which we all are concerned with, is there's significant amounts still even in what we're proposing. There's a lot of open air light. And that porch is very low, if you've been there, the floor of the porch is right at grade, and it's a very short cottage, which is kind of nice because you can see the house and see over it. And if we're approved, even better, we can see over the cottage.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
Not, but I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Done. Okay, with that, I'll open up for board questions, and we'll start down on our floor end.
Okay. Mary, just a quick question. On the application, the impervious coverage is different than your final. Does it change?
Is this the new application or the original? Because there was an amendment.
Okay.
The ordinance changed.
I don't think, I don't know if it was in our package.
Well, I can answer the question, though. It is as represented here, and we are at impervious coverage fifty-six point one percent.
Yeah, and actually, that's in the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if that may-
So we submitted over a year ago originally, the code has changed, and we've added more green space back, so there have been amendments to that.
And the other question I had, you have two air conditioning units now in the back.
We do.
You have three on the side.
Correct.
And a generator. But the impervious coverage, the square footage, doesn't appear to have changed.
Let's see. So impervious coverage, AC units and generator is thirty, and AC units and generator is thirty. So I have three smaller units taking up the two bigger ones. So, yeah, and the generator's already there.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, you can see, not to, but they are drawn even smaller. They're big units, they're pretty loud, so.
That's a crawl space under that?
Yes.
Is there a sun pump in the crawl space?
I don't know, is there a sun pump? No, no.
Okay, no, one more question.
Thank you. I have no questions. Sorry. Flood zone?
No flood zone, no basement, no flood zone. And the house is relatively new that we're working with, the footings are actually very good. We'll be adding down the middle where needed to support the third floor, but we're good there.
I have anything regarding the covered third-story deck? Is there a variance required with that?
No, so a variance is required when you cover a porch in the front setback? And we're kind of clean on that because we're so far back on the property. Yeah, yeah.
And then, just maybe a question for Mr. Fox. It's just a thought, it's a question and a thought. The ship, is that for the main principal dwelling? Or is that for use by the front building?
The ship?
The ship.
The ship, no, that's for us.
And so my question is, why the walkway from the front building all the way back to the ship? You could drastically reduce your impervious coverage by eliminating that walkway and have a nice, clean, open, airy space entirely.
That walkway is a much easier path to bring things back and forth on cars. I would go to a beach where like, space would be made out of junk and the way it pushes the car goes much easier, you know?
Great, great, great. I'm just trying to get the relatives.
No, that's the truth.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Great.
One other question is the calculation of parking. On the proposed site plan, I think it says it's eighteen point four feet wide, but it looks like it's to the cottage, it's mentioned to the cottage, and there's a concrete walkway there. So you're counting the concrete walkway as part of the driveway?
Yeah, they actually park on it now. It's all up there.
I mean, it doesn't make much difference, you've still got the-
They're using it.
Okay, just, you know, it doesn't change the number of parking places that exist. They have enough anyway.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah, they got enough.
But we'll just leave it alone.
Yeah.
That's all I got from you, thanks.
Hi, my question's-
Okay, and my question's, again, it may be similar to what you've very brought up as to whether it's relevancy or not, but I know in the past, I'm specifically talking about, what you have, this is the exercise room on the second floor, and then there's a walk-in closet that goes off of that exercise room, the walk-in closet, which to me looks like a bedroom then. And I don't know if there's any relevance in the way things get handled through the town because I think we're already counting six bedrooms, if I'm not mistaken?
Five in the back and two in the front.
I'm sorry.
There are five bedrooms in the-
Right, okay, I'm talking about the rear structure now.
You have five.
So five bedrooms, but my question is, and then there's a loft area which potentially could be used either as an exercise room or a bedroom as well. But I recall in the past, when there was a closet adjacent to a room, that we called that a bedroom.
I mean, the architect is a great, what the rule is.
I understand.
Can I help?
Is there any, all right, let me just, it's a, it's a, go with me a second. Whether we call that an exercise room as a five-bedroom or a bedroom via six bedroom, does it matter at all?
Doesn't matter.
Does it affect the parking?
I just want to make sure it doesn't affect how the town uses it, how taxes go, like everything.
Sometimes towns have a rule in ordinance that says, if you have a room and it's not a kitchen and it's not a dining room and it's bigger than X, it's a bedroom. That's what I think.
I specifically remember an application, again, not that it's relevant to this one, but that we insisted that the closet, that the closet be taken off the application just for that reason, that it had potential to be used as a bedroom to the existence of the class.
That could have been a parking issue too.
It could be, that's what I said, I don't know that it's apples to apples, but I just want clarification, and also so the rest of the board understands as well, in this particular example, whether they call an exercise room with a closet or a six-bedroom with a closet, it doesn't matter.
No.
Okay, all right, that's all. I have no further questions, but that will open up to the public. Anyone hear from the public that talked about this application? It's right now, it would be an excellent time. Come up to that microphone. There's no objective, or no one speaking on behalf of the public, so we're going to close the public session, and then I guess we move right into board comments, right? We summarize, we summarize first.
You want?
It hasn't been that long, hasn't it?
Yeah. Well, since last year we have.
It's been a while.
But yeah, so typically, you'd have board comments first, and then I'll-
Okay, we want to have board comments first, summarize. All right, go in the same sequence that we did our questions.
No further comments, I would be in favor of the app.
No comments.
No real comments, it's just-
No real comments, it's just, uh, typical of what I've seen in my year, here, when Mary brings it, uh, it looks good, so.
Mr. Luthen?
That looks like a good plan, and I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, state the, um, eight thousand square foot big lot. I don't think I've ever seen an application with multi-family use, two structures that only needed three variances like this that were all pre-existing, so I think that had a lot to do with my, in favor of the application, that it was really a minimal ask, based on, like, or some.
Mr. Ross, I'm, I'm of like mind with what you just said, I, I'm, I'm really stunned that so close to the beach that you have a lot as, as deep as this is, which is quite neat, and then the other neat characteristic is the fact that, um, adjacent to the east is just the parking lot for the apartment building, so, um, you know, even if this structure is, as a rear structure, fairly significant, I do believe that there's a lot of open room back there, especially on the eastbound side of the parking lot, that I don't, I am not as troubled about this as, as I might have been had it been sandwiched between two residential lots, so I feel a little more comfortable because that would more than likely stay forever, uh, parking like the apartment building, so, um, I don't really have any attachments to this application either. So, with that, Mr. Kennedy, sure, now we can summarize.
All right, so, if the application is to be approved, some of the conditions that we talked about are otherwise implied, or otherwise are our standard go-to conditions would be compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations the applicant's team made tonight, compliant with any affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, directives as required. We usually have a twenty-four month shelf life, uh, within which the applicant needs to obtain a building permit, and in all outside approvals, with the understanding that if the application or the variance leave materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, further, uh, approval from the board may be required. We have usually a standard no further expansion or intensification, absent further, uh, approval from the zoning board, maintaining, replacing, replant, replanting landscaping as necessary, particularly given the, uh, the fact that they're adding greenery to, to produce some of the, uh, variances, uh, or the extent of some of the variances, grading and range details to be worked out by the borough engineer if necessary, and, let's see, um, uh, let's see, the, I guess, Mary, you sort of said the air conditioner is going to be relocated to the west side in a zoning compliant location?
Yes.
And the existing air conditioning for the cottage unit stays the same?
Correct.
And, um, we're just verifying, it's at fifty-six point one, and then, now, Mr. Chairman, I initially thought you were going to say confirmation that, that, um, exercise room and lot not be utilized as bedrooms, but you're not saying that, I think, right?
It, it sounds moot, it sounds irrelevant, from what I understand, I, I, that surprises me, but if that's the case, there's no, uh, reason to delay it.
So, those were the, uh, the gist of the conditions, uh, Mr. Beekman, are those conditions okay to you and your client?
Those are satisfactory, Mr. Beekman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The public session was not only questions, but public comments as well, correct? So, we don't need to reopen.
Yeah, I mean, you can ask the panel to add any comments if you want to.
I'll just officially, because I did call it the public question session, but it was question and or comment, so if anyone has any comments, again, now would be the time, uh, since no one raised their hand, we'll close that, public comments, and we'll, um, move for a motion to approve this application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, and then, Mr. Frank. And then, Mr. Luthen.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Tomina?
Yes.
Mr. Rich Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Luthen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes. Congratulations, good luck with the project. Thank you.
I have to say, I'm sorry you have no female candidates on the board anymore.
Oh, you noticed?
No offense.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mary, enough?
I'm going to ask if they want the, uh, these, uh, handles, these, uh, or, or, or building on this, for the outside. Do you want these here? Yeah, I know, I know you don't want them, you take pictures of them, it's definitely electronic. Thanks.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Thank you, Mary. You sure you're good now?
Yeah. Rich, do you want this left?
I've got one.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to be a minute, let's be alone.
All right.
I'll see you out there.
Okay.
Oh, this is still sitting, I got the idea, it's okay.
I asked Rich if he wanted this, he said he didn't need it.
Got it.
Okay, uh, next application is Vista, nine oh three Ocean Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant team comes forward, we'll just do a couple of, uh, polls here. First up, is there anyone who had any questions or comments on the sufficiency of the notice or questions about the association? And if we do that, we, um, then we can address someone to-
Big purse.
Okay, uh, please, go to the microphone. One mention for the public, uh, we typically ask at the beginning of any application if there's any, uh, concerns about the sufficiency of notice, or if there's a-
Good night.
Ensuring that, that, um, processes are followed prior to us hearing the application to save us all a whole bunch of time and effort, in fact, if there was, if the notice was deficient, or there was approval in advance by the, the condo, particularly. Okay, thank you. Sir, please tell me who you are, and, uh, we're going to get sworn in.
My name is George Leedo, I am the treasurer-
Please spell.
L E D O.
Okay, thank you.
And I am the treasurer of Ocean Breeze, the owner.
Okay, and Ocean Breeze is the homeowner or condo association, uh, associated with this property?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, and I'll just swear you in, uh, if you could just, uh, state your address too, please?
It's, uh, my home.
Sure.
Uh, it's going towards Sage Street, home down in Jersey.
Okay, uh, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider, who will be the true best of your knowledge to help us out?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so you've been sworn, so you had a question regarding the notice?
Wait, hold on a second, Mr. Kennedy, I just have a couple of questions. Um, have, as treasurer of the board, are you a voting member of the board?
Yes.
And how many board members are there?
There are five or-
Okay, and, and if something were to, um, need to be passed within the association, does it require three affirmatives, um, for it to pass, or does it have to be unanimous?
Normally, we vote as an association, so we do, uh, majority in rule for the association.
So, all the homeowners, all, how many homeowners are there?
Nine.
Nine units, and does, does that need five affirmative homeowner votes for something to pass?
Correct.
Okay, and if, if, um, one of those homeowners weren't to vote, or two of them weren't to vote, is it majority of the voters, or is it majority of the nine?
Majority of the nine.
So, if four were not to vote, you would need all five affirmative for it to pass?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, please, Mr. Leedo, proceed.
Yes, so the notice that was sent out states that this is a two and a half story of multifamily dwelling, and it's going to be, uh, demolished and constructed as a two and a half story single unit dwelling. The current structure on the premises is a two-story, not a two and a half story.
Okay.
It's going from a two-story multifamily to a two and a half story-
So, your reason for mentioning this is that you're saying notice may have been incorrect in that it appeared that it was maintaining an existing condition when in fact it was expanding an existing condition regarding the half-story?
And there's other inconsistencies.
Okay, so let's list that as, as, as item number one. Mr. Kennedy, do you have that?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Leedo.
Okay. The existing condition for maximum allowed, uh, building coverage states twenty-nine point seven percent, proposed thirty point four, four percent, and by the plans that are in town, there is an expanded equipment for the property, much greater than the twenty-seven four percent.
That's it, Pete?
Yes.
Um, is there any, not that you would, but you're challenging the calculation, you don't know, you, you're, I wouldn't imagine that you would know what the correct calculation should be.
That is correct.
Okay, but you believe that the current statement of it being whatever that delta is to be understating the actual-
Correct.
Expansion of the building coverage, not lot coverage and, and non-impervious coverage, lot coverage, building coverage.
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Kennedy, that would be point number two, okay? Got that?
The next one is regarding the, um, impervious coverage, existing seventy-six point four, proposed seventy-seven point six percent. Again, the increase one point two percent doesn't add up to the plans that are in town.
And again, similar to that, although it doesn't look accurate, um, you don't know what the accurate calculation ought to be given the plans?
Correct.
Okay, um, are you, did you review the plans whether or not, as in the prior application, they were opening up any which currently impervious to become permeable, uh, just maybe there's an offset there that you might not be aware of?
No, that, from what I saw from the plans-
Okay.
There is less grass of permeable coverage and more construction, construction-
Mr. Leedo, do you have any statement, um, that you think would be accurate to say how many additional square feet you think the plans are versus this, this minor, um-
I don't know exactly, but it looks substantially bigger than what exists today.
Okay, and what was the stated, um, expansion, um, from what to what?
From the purpose coverage, from seventy-six point four to seventy-seven point six, one point two percent greater.
Okay, and what leads you to believe, um, that, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound like I'm rilling it, but, but I really think it's important that, that for Mr. Kennedy's purposes, we're clear about the, the reason for the concern. You might have some reason to look at that and say, that can't possibly be one point two percent, and, and why do you think that?
Because the plans show an, uh, an expansion on the side of the house, that is several feet, and also towards the front of the house, that is several feet, that would be much greater than the seventy-seven point six percent, one point two percent.
That's what I'm getting at, so, so, so you're eyeballing something that looks maybe two feet wider and maybe twenty feet long or something like that?
I think it's, it's probably maybe greater than three feet wider-
Okay.
And greater than three feet forward.
So, you think, like, you're talking about nine square feet then, we're not talking about like a hundred square, or eight square feet, you're talking about a difference of maybe nine square feet from what, what you could view?
It's, I think it's going to be greater than the square feet numbers.
Well, you said three by three, didn't you?
Yeah, I think so. I'm, I'm thinking, from what I saw, it's at least three feet in the other direction, in the direction, and three feet forward, so that that'd be- He's saying the one door. With the length of the building.
Oh, no, that's, uh, wait, but-
The length of the building.
Oh, okay, I, all right, so-
That's one page, more than one percent.
Sixty square feet.
Yeah, and it's multi, it's four.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Kennedy, that's the statement being made here, is that, is that, to an untrained eye, it looks to be like sixty, you know, something in excess of fifty or sixty square feet, and therefore the one point two calculation of expansion looks incorrect for impervious? Yes?
I think mathematically, it's wise, because we're basing it on the thirty-seven thousand five hundred square feet.
Of the entire property?
Right, remember, this is the condo.
Yes.
So, it's not that one unit, so, if he's talking fifty square feet over thirty-seven thousand, or sixty square feet.
Understood, understood.
Right, it's not on that one line.
Okay, so I think that becomes a matter of conversation that needs to be had then, in terms of how these calculations are, were formulated, um, because you're right, if it's across the entire nine, I would assume this is nine properties?
Correct.
Is there any common area besides the nine properties?
Yes, there's a parking lot.
Okay, so the nine properties, I don't know that the parking lot, um, gets put into that calculation, but you know that by any chance?
Comes under the lot coverage.
So, lot coverage, okay.
Well, the entire lot is lot coverage.
Okay, so dealing with the condo, uh, Mr. Kennedy, I think, um, it's a reasonable question to be asked, that, that the expansion that's looking here, is it, it's, it's against the entire home, well, homeowners, not just, not just the, uh, the applicant?
Correct.
Okay, very good, yes, sir, go ahead, please.
So, next, the next, uh, uh, statement was on the front yard setback, it says existing fifteen feet, proposed fifteen feet, which again, is different from what's in the plan at town, um, it's significantly come forward.
I'm sorry, the plans that you're looking at, or you're talking about, or are they the plans we have, which I think are dated May third?
Yes.
Okay, and they're the ones you're looking at?
Yes.
And you believe the ones that town is looking at is not, but, either it's the same date, different plans, or it's completely different plans, different date?
I, it, those are the same plans that I, I looked at in town, and the setback is not the same, it's not fifteen feet.
I, I'm still trying to understand though, because if you're looking at the same plans that were submitted, I, I don't know how you can make that statement, I'm curious, how do we get to that?
I, I know the distance from the-
Oh, so you're saying the plans are inaccurate?
It, well, I'm saying that the letter's inaccurate to the plan, because-
The notification letter is not matching what you read on the plans?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, do you have that?
Got it.
Okay, we're going to have some work to do here, I think.
And then, the side yard setbacks, existing one point eight, proposed one point eight, there's an expansion on the side, so it can't be the same.
Okay, so, in other words, the notification did, indicate, the notification indicated that there would be no change, but upon reviewing the plans, it appears that there is a change to that one point eight feet.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so we have that, Mr. Kennedy?
Got it.
That's it?
Okay, may I ask you a question, another one?
Sure.
Were you part of the group that reviewed this? Um, we have a letter dated May eighth from the association, were you part of that group?
Yes, and, and-
And what was the matter?
What was discussed at that meeting, when we discussed it, the, uh, project to, to expand that, or to redo that property, was that they were going to mirror the property to their left. This plan that is sitting in, in town is a greater expansion than that property, so that's why, you know, that's what caught our attention to this, when we voted for this, and we wanted this project to go forward in terms of remodeling this property, but the expansion is not what we had foreseen when we voted on this.
Now, I was part of a condo board in my prior life, and what I find amazing is that these plans are dated May third, and you guys had this approved and were sent out by May eighth, could you explain how that happened?
Yeah, it, once it's approved, the president of the association would send out a letter to-
Right, but if the plan's dated May third, how did you guys approve it and send a letter within five days?
They had, we didn't review plans at the meeting when we were approving this, we were approving that they can go up and, and redo the structure, um, but nobody thought that there was always be this change in footprint.
Again, some of this becomes condo business, not ours, but, like, why would the condo association be approving the work to go forward without having any plans?
That's normally the way we want it, because nobody has expanded their footprint within any of the remodelings that have gone on.
So, you feel the vote that the condo association took, um, um, was based on different information than what actually was submitted to town for the plan? Have you taken that back to your condo association for reconsideration?
We discussed that, and actually, our president reached out to town to see if they should have a second vote on it, and they said, no, no need to have a second vote.
It's the condo association's decision, not the town's decision, if you're going to have a second vote, so I don't know that you have to ask permission of the town, I permission of the Town. I mean, the Town's saying it's not necessary if you're standing by the original decision. If you're, if you're rescinding the May eighth, the May eighth letter, and you feel, you know, the homeowners now would feel differently or vote differently, I think the homeowners' association should take, take that matter up and then determine whether they want to rescind their prior approval.
And that's something that, that the president wanted to do, and she discussed it with me, but she was told there's no need to do another vote.
That's, the Town would say there's no need, but the association has the right to determine that. I mean, I mean, the Town doesn't have to accept that initial vote, like, the condo association doesn't have to accept that initial vote, but if we have a letter on file and no one's disputing it, we're just gonna go with that letter. So of course we'll say there's no need, because there is no need for the Town. Apparently, you guys have a need within your association to do this stuff.
And there we are.
Right, so if you're a board member, if you're treasurer, you should be taking some steps to deal with that, I would imagine.
Again, I will bring it up to the board, but, you know, we, we take decisions as a group, and I'm not in a position to take decisions not to accept the existing letter.
Well, okay, well, that's, if, if there's not gonna be any further communication from the board regarding this application, we're just gonna accept the May eighth letter. I, I mean, that's up to you guys, if you want to dispute that and say, hold on, we want it, we, you know, we're rethinking this based on the plans, you know, that's the condo board's decision, and then we would take that under advisement and, 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 you know, perhaps, you know, adjourn or put it off until you guys have, have the opportunity to take a second look at this, but absent that, we're just gonna go with what was filed then, May, May approval. I think you guys have to decide that, we don't, we, we just go with what was given to us, and it looks like condo association has approved it. If you guys fail to review the plans properly, you know, I, I, and I'm not saying that we're gonna approve it based on what I'm telling you right now.
And I'm not asking you to, I'm, I'm not gonna
Okay, it sounds like there's other defects with the notice, that we should probably weigh more than that, but I'm just advising that the condo board does have the right to say, upon further review, we don't feel the May eighth decision or May eighth letter should remain valid, and if that's the case, it's gonna throw this whole thing up, because we, because we really shouldn't be proceeding until the condo board has provided sufficient approval.
I would just say to, you know, proceed on the merits of a letter not representing what is filed with the
Understood, okay. So, Mr. Kennedy, you have the, do you
Sure, I
Mr. Leboz, Lebo, correct?
Lido.
Lido, Lido's
I do.
Okay.
Can I just, for the record, could you ask if there's any other members of the public who have questions?
Thank you, yes. That's it, all right, thank you, excellent, excellent presentation. Anyone else here to speak on this application?
Just on the notice.
On the no, on the sufficiency of the notice, I guess, correct. Sufficiency of notice?
May I have your heard on the notice, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I would suggest
Sure, yeah, since, since there's been a debate on whether or not it's sufficient, yes, Mr. Shipers, absolutely.
Well, I'm a student of this board, and the chairwoman who signed the notice from the association, I think is Mrs. Chickamare. I just happen to have the minutes and your resolution for Mrs. Chickamare's approval one year ago from this meeting in January. These issues that were raised by Mr. Lido
Our approval for what project?
Her project.
Oh, her project?
Mrs. Chickamare.
Okay.
This is a very interesting association.
All right, okay, but, okay, just mind me clear.
So, Mr. De Oriol, who may have, I think he voted affirmatively for that project.
What I'm picking on England.
I am commending you, because Mr. De Oriol remembers from when he voted on that resolution, the whole issue of this condominium, and when you actually read Mr. De Falcow's plans, and if I have to make a proffer on that, Mr. De Oriol is correct, because it's the perimeter, I think it would be backed up by Mr. De Yanki, and it is the perimeter, our limits of the condo, condo association that determines setbacks. And if you look at our plans, you'll see a lot of them refer to units other than this unit that are pre-existing, non-conforming setbacks within the entire perimeter of the condominium association. And again, Mr. De Oriol, I don't know his background, but he's a pretty good mathematician, because when he did his math, he's probably almost spot on, on the calculations regarding imperious and perhaps foreign things of that nature. So, with due respect to Mr. Lido, and I don't wanna cross the boundary limit at this juncture, on what motivation he may or may not have, but no notice is sufficient. And if you need a proffer, or you just want me to think through Mr. De Falcow when he's on, because he's gonna go through the chart anyway, I'll, I'll do it then.
Okay, so, Mr. Kennedy, the
Sure.
Sufficiency items that were raised here, what would you suggest we, we do propose?
Right, well, I would suggest it is bill, are you, so it sounds like you were saying, based upon how certain measurements and calculations are, are taken with regard to this unique association, that do you feel comfortable that your calculations in your notice are correct?
Yes, and they're off my engineer, I, I don't make up the notice, I take the zone grid like everyone does, we go down the zone grid, the engineer calculates the zone grid, and the zone grid goes into the notice, I think I'm pretty good, but I'm not gonna say I'm presumptuous that I trust my engineers, that for what all the setbacks and foreign imperious, a lot of them go
Okay, so, so, thank you. Mr. Shipers, that notwithstanding, the, I do find some merit in the, in the notice stating existing two and a half and basically maintaining two and a half, when in fact the notice was existing as two, and you're going to two and a half, I do think that's somewhat material. That's a material error, I believe, in the notice, a defect, so what would we do about that?
Right, if I could be heard.
Sure, absolutely.
With the utmost respect, Mr. Fitzgerald, and I think Mr. Kennedy will discuss with you, but I don't wanna speak for him, I don't think it's an immaterial notice issue. The law on notice basically says, notice must be given to the public, where and when the hearing is, a general description of what is occurring, which I think our notice sets forth, sets forth all of the particulars of the notice. If there's an issue on a half-story versus a, a third story, I don't think it's material. In addition, the notice
Is there a change to the height from what it was to what it's gonna be?
Mr. De Falcow has it thirty-five, two and a half stories, it turning into thirty-five and two and a half stories. My point is, I don't think a court would call that an immaterial issue in a notice. The other
Or no change to the height? There's no change to the height of the building?
It seems to be being proposed at thirty-five feet, two and a half stories.
And what's existing?
I don't know the exact height, because my chart says thirty-five, two and a half stories.
But I would think the delta between two stories versus two and a half, relative to it being now a taller structure, it does become material. Fault size, I mean, it's, it's not
I, I, I will debate, you ask Mr. Kennedy to give you the definition of what notice requirements are. Notice requirements don't have to be perfect, under our case law, notice requirements require a description of what is being proposed, when it is going to be heard, and where you can get the plans and have a reasonable opportunity to review them for the hearing.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, you're up.
Okay, first up, before I, I happen to be speaking with Ted, and I think just, I'll get into this later on, Ted, I think, again, not substantive part, but I think you think it's reasonable, so
Let's speak and oppose this three?
If it was proposed, it's two and a half.
And you, and your interpretation of, of what the plan looked like, it's three, so, so that also would then be a defect in, in notice, because it'd be going from not only two to two and a half, it would be going from two story, three story, based on what your definition of a third story would be, okay?
So, so, let's talk about the notice. Now, as is always the case, notice is important, and what we say in the law is, notice is jurisdictional, because if you don't have sufficient notice, you're not even supposed to proceed, and to what Mr. Shipers was just referencing is, is entirely correct in terms of what the law requires. So the purpose of the notice is to put the world on, on notice to what you are proposing, and so when you read that, you're gonna say, do I care about this? Do I wanna object to this? Do I wanna support it? Do I wanna check it out and, and get more details? And in New Jersey, just for the record, what, what it means to give proper notice is that you have to notify these ten days in advance, the owners of property within two hundred feet, and this means you have to send it to them, have the correct address, and within ten days, and it also has to be published in the official newspaper. So by law, the notice has to have four general things, one, the day, the time, the location of the hearing, two, the block and lot and the street address
So many speaking instances.
Three, the nature of the matter, you know, what is up, up for grab, what is proposed, and four, what, where the plant, that the plans are on file and available for public inspection. So
So it sounds like three of those four were easily met, but the third item is up for
Sure, and that's what we're gonna discuss. And, and so we have April check the, the mail receipts to make sure that it was mailed to the correct addresses, and we have an affidavit of publication.
We don't follow that, right?
Yep, and so just, at the risk, I'll, I'm gonna speed read, so, Mr. Shipers' notice, please take notice at the undersigned on behalf of the applicant Victor Batista, submitted development application to Borough Belmar with respect to the property located at nine oh three B Ocean Avenue, Unit five, known on the Borough tax map as block ninety, lot three point oh one, C zero 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 five. Applicant intends to demolish existing two and a half story multifamily, two-family dwelling, and construct a modern two and a half story dwelling in its place. Applicant's lot is Adidas Lot within the Ocean Breeze at Belmar Condominium Association. Applicant's proposal, or further proposals for renovation under deferred maintained unit within the condo complex. The application will require approval for the following variances, use variance, the existing Unit five is a pre-existing two-family unit, proposed would be a single-family unit. Building coverage maximum allowed twenty percent, existing twenty-nine point seven percent, proposed thirty point four, four percent. Imperious coverage maximum allowed forty percent, existing condition seventy-six point four percent, proposed seventy-seven point six percent. Front yard setback required twenty feet, existing condition fifteen feet, proposed fifteen feet, peranties condo Unit three. Front yard setback porch required twelve feet, existing condition eight feet, proposed eight feet, peranties condo Unit three. Side yard setback required five feet, existing condition one point eight feet, proposed one point eight feet. Additionally, the applicant will be seeking relief for any and all other variances, design waivers, submission waivers, which are necessary or which may become necessary during the public hearing process. This appeal and application have been assigned by the zoning board of adjustment, and a public hearing has been ordered for Thursday, January twenty-fifth, twenty-four, at six o'clock PM at Borough Belmar Municipal Building located at six oh one Main Street, Belmar oh seven seven oh nine, when the case is called, you, I'm sorry, oh seven seven one nine, when the case is called, you may appear either in person or by agent or attorney and present any objections which you may have to the granting of relief sought in petition. All documents relating to this appeal and application are on file, may be reviewed by the public in the office of the board secretary who are available. For inspection Monday through Friday from nine o'clock to four o'clock, this notice is sent to you by the applicant by the order of the zoning board of adjustment. So, just for the record, that, that's what we have. So, it appears to have, we put the world on notice as to the general nature. Now, there's a question and concern about some of those alleged technical inaccuries, and I guess the question becomes, is there some technical inaccuracies, and if so, are they significant or material? And then another question, are they missing variances from that notice, and if so, are they significant? And FYI, what is a good thing here is, is Mr. Shipers has in there, and by the way, any and all other variances, you know, in the, the list that. So, the question to Mr. Shipers that you already addressed, is it accurate, are there any material inaccuracies? And as board attorney, I always hate dealing with notice issues, because if someone rating the notices and they, and they think it's X, and then they get here and it turns out to be X times two, or Y, that, that, that makes everyone a little concerned. So, Mr. Shipers, you heard the objections, and obviously you do not agree with them, and just for the record, I just wanna ask one question before we go on, so, notwithstanding that you believe that the notice is, is sufficient, so obviously you, you have your opinion that the notice is fine and accurate and legally sufficient, but I would say it's just out of an abundance of caution, and just to prevent any potential legal issues, is there any school of thought on your part that says, look, what was raised was not a legitimate defect, but just out of an abundance of caution, I want to renotice just so that there are no issues? Is that an issue that you want to deal with, or, or no?
Right, over my opinion is that, to be bound, I perhaps should take a moment with my client before I
Okay.
I express my opinion.
Fair enough.
We'll be right back.
Will you take three minute break?
Do we do, we'd like to, five minute break?
Yeah.
We have to break from, I mean, they're gonna take a few minutes anyway. So, great, okay. Are we gonna take a minute again, Mr. Claudio?
Yes.
All right, this is Claudio.
Mr. Ross?
Here, here.
Mr. Maria?
Still here. Still here? Yes.
Mr. Rovio?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, where did we leave off?
Okay, we left off, I think we took a little bit of a recess, and I think Mr. Shipers has a comment.
But, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Shipers, in deference to you, I, I feel your client is owed an explanation as to why our zoning officer feels it's not a half-story, it's a full story.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay, so you, you know what that issue is?
We have no issue with the zoning officer.
Okay, so you know, so, do you, do you agree it's a three story then, that the plans are showing a three story?
We, we understand that his comment says it's a three story, and we're not gonna mitigate it, and I, we're going to, out of an abundance of caution, I had his letter, ran use, denial, I know what it says, out of abundance of caution, contrary counsel recommendation, I guess my client's smarter than me, he wants me to clean up the notice, so there is absolutely no issue, outstanding my position. But anyway, that's why I recommend
Okay, so it remains, it remains to be seen if, if we're looking at two and a half versus three stories then, correct?
Yeah, I know what the issue is, and I know, and I know how, I think we're gonna address it.
Okay, all right, I would Mr. Chairman That might have made sense to, to hear, but if you don't feel necessary, that's all.
I, I heard it on.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I thank the applicant, and I thank Mr. Shipers, because he said he's doing this out of an abundance of caution, because he doesn't wanna go into an application on what maybe, maybe not, could be a notice issue, so I thank you, I appreciate that. So, what, Maple, can we give him a new date for which he can notice?
The next meeting is February twenty-second.
Mr. Shipers, is that enough time for you to go?
I, I think I need to, because it may be very well to plan revisions potentially.
Whatever that is, March twenty-eighth.
I think we're better at March twenty-eighth.
All right, so, we're going to have this application carried through March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at six o'clock, with renotice and appreciation for the same, and just for the record, Mr. Shipers, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board had to act on the matter?
I do.
Okay, before we adjourn this, though, I would, I would, I mean, it's not just me, I believe other board members feel similarly, that we encourage the condo association to, to re-review this since eleven, the date last May, and there seemed to be some dispute over the accuracy of the plan, that they take a good hard look at not only this proposal, but if there's going to be a revised proposal and reaffirm or, or affect the prior decision that was made in May of two thousand twenty-three, I think that's gonna be extremely critical to how we proceed in, in February or March, whenever, whenever you're gonna get on the agenda.
I would just, Mr. Chairman, is good for ease or good for gander? I think this board should also look back at its resolutions regarding this, not, everyone's judged on their own, but I think the board should look back at its prior history within the last eighteen months or so within this association, and, and any other, you know, be wary of any other pending applications.
I, I appreciate that advice, I think it's good I, I appreciate that advice, I think it's good advice, I was actually going to suggest, since it was an agenda item, I don't know if you were in the room at the time, that we do a report, add a report to the mayor and council, and we make some recommendations, I believe, I mean, it could be specific to this particular property, but it should be specific to any similar property, when it comes to these calculations, how we proceed, because for those that have the memory to recall, each time an applicant, one of the, in this example, one of nine, take a piece of that FAR, it leaves less of a piece for, for, for the remaining eight applicants, and so.
It's a communal FAR, so to speak.
And, and, and I don't know that from a town point of view, if the spirit and intent of what was supposed to be done is actually doing it justice, and if we have other condo associations that might, that this might apply to, you know, this is gonna be sticky though, because it's, it's so unique, maybe, to the particular property, that you might not be able to do ordinance that would be applicable in all cases, but in terms of this calculation and how we're to proceed, at minimum, it should say acknowledgement by the condo board that they're giving away a piece of their lot coverage or building coverage, the condo association should be, should be tasked with more clarity in terms of what, what, what they're approving prior to coming to us, and, because that's what happened here, right, like, it was approved, and then when they actually, you know, saw the plans and did the calculations, it didn't match what the expectation was.
I, I object to that statement, I, I think it's a statement to make that it's a potential issue, but I, I don't, I don't want the record to reflect.
Okay, understood, I will stand corrected on that, I have no problem with that, Mr. Chairman, that wasn't what I was insinuating, it was not.
I support his argument.
It was not intentional, I'm just trying to guidance for the town, that more burden would be put on, on any condo or homeowners' association relative to what they're approving, just so we don't wind up in this situation where, you know, a do-over is out.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I push it into what Phil Schipers had suggested, may, if it's okay with you, should we have April maybe, as part of your package, give out some of the prior resolutions we've done, and only because it's not relevant for the actual substance, but I think, I'm doing this all by memory, which is always dangerous, I think in some of the prior resolutions, we have had, the board has made general findings about how FAR should be calculated at the site, based upon borough engineers, and, and how setbacks.
What particular site you're talking about?
Yes, so that might be, and again, if, if we look at the old resolution and it's helpful, great, and if it's not helpful, we ignore it, but I think at least he requested that we, we do that, and I think maybe if.
I agree.
Done prior certification, so we can do that, great.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Kennedy, and we have the flavor over the tongue for thirty years of going before this board, if litigation was going to be ensued, guaranteed this board, those prior resolutions, prior words that would be board members' mouths and their votes, will be in the freehold briefs and articles, so, I, I think, I think they're very relevant, because this is a sui generis, in and of its own condominium, where you've got a mini condo within a condominium, and it's a very unique form of ownership and a way of layout in our, I guess, seventy-five zones, so, every application's gonna be an expansion of a non-conforming use, and these calculations as the setbacks are all gonna be relevant, I think consistency needs to be reviewed.
Understood.
Thank you.
Very, very good, is there anything else relative to this application, because if not?
I think we just make a motion to carry it.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, was it, was March 8 chosen, or?
March 28th.
Very good, okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn this particular application to March 28th. Seven. Mr. Lubin, second one, thank you.
All right, favor?
All right.
You wanna oppose?
Thank you.
Before we leave, just wanna congratulate the new board members and the other older board members still.
I wanna thank you for bringing some color into the room on a gray January evening.
Yes, I can only bring one thing tonight, that's what I say.
Thank you all, we're gonna go into executive session, so.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending or anticipated litigation matters, including private litigation and potentially the Bellmore litigation, and pursuant to law, the minutes will be kept and made available to the public, given the needs and charity.
Okay.
Second here.
Okay. We'll have to win the session.